Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. This is Tuesday, May 13th, and we're glad you could join us today. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start our day with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by our own Reverend Pastor Michael Hutchison from the Conyers First United Methodist Church.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairwoman.
Good morning.
Let's bow for prayer. Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts acknowledging your sovereignty over all things. We thank you for the opportunity to gather in this place and for the freedom to do so in peace. We especially thank you for those who have dedicated themselves as public servants, those who have answered the call to lead, to serve, and to steward the well-being of our community. We ask for your wisdom to guide the decisions made in this meeting. May integrity, justice, compassion mark every discussion and action. Grant our leaders the courage to do what is right even when it is not easy, and the humility to listen and to learn from one another. We lift up the youth of our community, protect them, we pray. Surround them with safe homes, strong mentors, hopeful opportunities. Let them grow into the future leaders and peacemakers we so desperately need. And Father, we pray for unity in a world so often divided. May we in this community be examples of respect, understanding, and cooperation. Remind us that we are neighbors first, called to love one another. And finally, we pray for the well-being and for every person in our community. May peace, provision, and purpose rest upon our families, our schools, and our businesses in every corner of this community. We offer this prayer in the precious and powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we're going to start with their special recognitions and presentations today with CEO Jennifer Hibbard, and she is going to tell us more about play therapy in her presentation today.
Hi, good morning and thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you to Commissioner Williams for serving on our board for probably, what is it, 15 years now or so? It's been close. It's been close. I love your shirt. Thank you for representing Mental Health Month in May. So I'm going to introduce to you our Director of Play Therapy Gloria Juliao, and also another one of our play therapists, Annie Stewart. They're going to be making the presentation. They are the experts today, so.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. This is a little different. We usually train like this and talk to everybody, so I'm not sure where to look, so bear with us. We're excited to be here despite the traffic. So my name is Gloria Juliao, and I'm the Director for the training, play therapy training team, and the Director for this wonderful program that we're going to tell you a little bit about today. I'm also the President for the Georgia Association of Play Therapy. I've been serving on that board since 2022 as the Vice President and now as the President. So I'm very passionate about play therapy and serving kids. We have... Oh, that's me. So we have Centerville was, I guess, a new avenue for me to be able to talk and to be able to, I guess, serve where my heart lays, which is trauma. And Annie and I are going to tell you a little bit more about the trauma and play therapy, I guess where they meet. But I'm going to show you my team. Sorry. Next slide, thank you. So this is my wonderful team. It's a very small team that we have, but everybody there really works with trauma. We work with play. We are able to infuse an array of different modalities, all play-based and all trauma-based to serve the little ones. We serve 0 to 17 at Centerville. And we really emphasize working with the families, working in what we call like a wrap service because we're able to provide groups, we're able to provide a model that is different from outpatient services. We're able to really dedicate time to serve one-on-one, to be able to do parallel work with the caregivers, which is a little different, right? Because we really spend the time to be able to give that parenting skills, that ability to hold the caregiver in the space that they need. We work a lot with foster care. That's probably our primary referral source, and working with those parents that are already overwhelmed because they don't have one kid, but they have three or four at a time. So being able to give them that space that they need to be able to vent sometimes, right? And to be able to give them the resources, books, and to be able to give them the time, you know, just different parenting skills that they need. Next slide, please. This is, you know, I showed you the clinicians in the slide before, but I would call this my core, my backbone. So this is the people that do the work in the front. These are the people that are the faces or the voices when you call in, right? Or when you're walking into our program. They are the ones that are greeting our clients. They're the ones that are always showing up there. Macy is our program assistant. I call her my left hand. She's a lefty. And then Erica, the Community Support Individual, is the person that goes to the homes and provide those skills and resources for our families. And then Carol Lee is our Care Coordinator. She's, this is a resource person, so sometimes, you know, clients are, they might live too far away, and we're going to show you a map where our clients are coming from. And sometimes they can't, you know, they can't come to our center, or I'm sorry, to our program. And so we are able to provide some resources for them in a different way. They might need to be connected with doctor's appointment. They might need to be connected with, you know, with, you know, schools. They might need to be connected with after-school care. That's what Carol Lee is doing. We're going to show you in the next slide a picture of what our facilities look like. I want to say that they're state-of-the-art because we're in a new building. This is an example of where play therapy looks like. Our outpatient centers, I have to brag about Viewpoint as a whole because our outpatient centers look like this, or that's what we strive for at least. But play therapy happens in that rooms, in those rooms to the right as you're looking at. Play is, you know, the language for the kids. Toys are their words. And we give them a space where they can come in and express themselves in a way, in a way that they can, and in a space where they are the ones who take the lead, in a place where they are the only ones who, you know, who can really dictate the play. And we are the facilitators for that. So we're that one trusting adult who's able to provide the safe space for that child, especially when you're working with trauma. Next slide, please. So I told you a little bit about who we serve. We serve 0 to 17. These are some of the modalities that we're treating. We're treating, we're using child-parent psychotherapy, which is a new modality here in Georgia. We've been trained, this is our second cohort right now. We work with child's... Sorry. We work with trauma-informed modalities such as child-parent psychotherapy, which is one. We work with trauma-focused CBT, trauma-focused integrative play therapy, and child... Thank you, child-parent. We also do, we're the hub for training, so part of what we do at Centerville is training. We are very proud of being the home for play therapy. We, you know, our focus there is CNA services, child, I'm sorry, I use a lot of acronyms. We do child and adolescent services, so we really train our clinicians that come in. We are starting actually, hopefully, two interns this fall, and so we provide supervision. We currently have two supervisors that are registered play therapists, and two of us are bilingual, which is, you know, a really good thing. So we're able to provide services for multiple, you know, multiple centers that provide services in different languages. We also have, and I don't think it's in that picture, but we have a two-way mirror. So we're able to provide life supervision, and we're also able to provide something that we call filial therapy that allows us the child and the caregiver to be in a session with the, you know, in a dyadic relationship, and then the clinician or the supervisor can be observing that session, which is very unique to a lot of the places that don't have that. And then we're also able to give back to the community by providing something that we call trauma-informed kinder training. And that is, Annie and I actually go into the schools into kinder, and we just partnered with Easter Seals, and so we're able to provide for about five teachers a trauma-informed way of teaching those teachers, not pun intended, how to work and how to enhance their relationship with their students with basic, I guess, basic play therapy principles of how to connect and then be the change agent for the child, for the student that they work with. So yeah, that's a way of supporting, you know, the kids where, you know, at their baseline. Main modalities, child-centered play therapy, so that, you know, usually it says three there, but, you know, we've been using child-centered play therapy from ages two and up. Filial therapy, which is the one that I just spoke about, so it's that dyadic relationship that we have. And then child-parent psychotherapy is another dyadic, and it's trauma-based. Filial is attachment-based, child-parent psychotherapy is attachment and trauma-based. This is something that we're very proud of. So we are the only CSB Community Service Board in Georgia that is an approved provider for the Association of Play Therapy. So we are able to train and provide CE, so credit units, for those who are coming to us, and we're able to grow clinicians from there. So that's very exciting. CSI services, I spoke a little bit about those, but this is Erica. She is the one who is able to go into the houses and provide, you know, I like to say that Erica is our eyes, the fly in the wall that's able to see what we don't see as clinicians. She's the one who's able to work with the clients in the community, as in the school. She's able to support those caregivers who may not have the words or the resources, or sometimes the knowledge, right? To be able to fill out, not fill them out for them, but help them to go to the Social Security Administration and get the forms to be able to apply or reapply for Medicaid. So she's the one who's going to be able to hold their hand and work that extra mile for them. Next slide, please. Group therapy. Group therapy is something that we are, our program is new, by the way. I should have started by saying that we really only open in October. But group therapy is something that we're very proud of, and it's something that we're really working on launching more and more at Centerville. The power of group is just, I mean, it's wonderful. We, our clinicians are training positive parenting and positive discipline, which is a different, it's come from an Atlierian-based approach. And so we are making sure that throughout Viewpoint, we are, you know, providing those services for our clients, for adult clients, and also for our caregivers on their children adolescent services. We have also, we will be providing child-centered group play therapy, trauma-focused integrative play therapy. And last year, we launched adventure therapy, which is being able to take the kids outside and, you know, in the ambience of, I think it was in the summer, but in the ability of them building cooperation, teamwork, and different activities they're able to experience, you know, different tasks that are sometimes difficult and challenging, but then they're able to work through their experiences together as a team. So it's something that we're hopefully going to launch again in the fall. Summer is very hot for that activity at times. And then, you know, we have the filial group as well. So group is, like I said, is something that we are definitely trying to have more and more at Centerville. We have, next slide, please. We have that clinical readiness pathway. I spoke about supervision. We want to make sure that we are not only the hub for supervision, but everybody who comes through Centerville, they're able to train. We have about, I wouldn't say two to three trainings probably per month, whether we're doing it in-home and based at Centerville, or we take them outside. So we have, and I think Annie will have the numbers in a little bit, but we train not only within Viewpoint, but we're also partnering with other community service boards such as Advantage, so they send their clinicians in to train with us. And then we have, next slide, please. We have clinical supervision, you know, again, we want to make sure that everybody within Viewpoint is clinical-trained, so we don't have to only have the Centerville team, but we have everything expand through the outpatient centers and also hopefully other programs as well that drink the Kool-Aid of play therapy. Next slide, please. This is our partners at this point. We, like I said, we just started in October, so hopefully next time we get invited here again, we have a double, the partnerships in there. So these are some of the referrals, and we're working on some technical assistance too with some of the other providers because, again, they don't have a Director of Play Therapy, and although they come to our trainings, they don't have the supervision that it takes to continue the work after the trainings that they do.
All right. So this is a snapshot of who we are currently serving since starting in October. This is our most recent numbers. So so far, we've served the 64 clients, 13 sets of siblings. So that's either between anywhere from two sibling pairs to four. Forty-seven caregivers in total receiving services from us, three community partners. We're supervising over 10 clinicians. Something that we're really proud of is that we have so far five languages spoken amongst our clients. We're able to provide Spanish-speaking services in clinic. Unfortunately, Romanian, Russian, and Urdu, we cannot provide in clinic, but we do have access to the language line services that assist us. We would love to be able to provide or have more clinicians that speak dual languages because what we know about child trauma is that the best possible trauma treatment comes by speaking the language that the trauma occurred in. So, you know, if the trauma occurred in Romanian, for example, we want them to be able to process that trauma in Romanian. But we do what we can with what we have right now. We have a really wide variety of ages being served. You can see there that four to seven is our biggest age range at the moment. Makes us unique comparatively to some of the other centers even within Viewpoint, but certainly across the state. Next slide, please. This is the type of trauma that we've worked on and seen so far. I think most of these, you know, kind of speak for themselves. So I'll point out a couple that maybe not everybody is familiar with. The first being attachment disturbance. That is any disruption in caregivers. So whether that is being taken from a caregiver under stressful circumstances or even, I think about often for this group, and it's something that we're really starting to focus on, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on, but when we send soldiers overseas, you know, that's an attachment disturbance to the child. Traumatic immigration, even really easy immigration processes can be tough, so we can only imagine when it is a really difficult immigration process, particularly when we're looking at a refugee population. Transgenerational trauma is the idea that trauma is passed down genetically from generation to generation. So the more traumatized the parent is, that leads to trauma in the child. I know what I've seen personally, I have worked on and treated children that present like they have post-traumatic stress disorder and have never experienced a trauma event themselves. It's because their parents are parenting from a traumatized perspective. Of course, school violence is a big one that, as well as community violence that we're seeing an uptick in, for sure. This is a map of where clients are traveling to us from. So you can see we have quite, people coming quite far to get to us, right? We have, last, when I checked yesterday, we had an average of 14 miles being driven to get to us. The reason we show this is that it really speaks to the need for replication of our center in other counties, right? We already have the Viewpoint Health Outpatient Center here in Conyers, but particularly our little, little ones are still being sent. They come in, they intake at the Conyers and then get sent to us at Centerville for further treatment when they need more specialized treatments. We would love to see us replicated elsewhere in other counties. A little bit about our play training program. Of course, play is everybody's very first language, no matter what culture you're from or what language you speak growing up. And it's what children gravitate to, right? So we really believe that for children, and even in a lot of places, I mean, I know for myself sometimes as an adult, right? That toys and play is the way that I communicate, right? And so if that's true for me, it's certainly true for children. We can't ask them to join us on our level and use all this wonderful language that we have as adults when they maybe can only say two sentences in total, right? When we're thinking about really little ones. We would love to train more Georgia therapists in play therapy. That's really a huge goal of the play training program wing of Centerville. We really want to kind of spread that, as Gloria said, spread the Kool-Aid of play therapy to as many therapists as possible. We've been fairly successful at that. This year, we're offering six play trainings for a total possible 36 play therapy CE, so continuing education units. We're really proud of that and looking forward to doing just as many, if not more, next year. We actually are starting meetings today for 2026 trainings, so we're excited about that. Next slide, please. We started our training program in 2020. It's just been growing since. Last year, we trained 269 clinicians across six open trainings. We also hold a lot of in-service trainings for our own staff members within Viewpoint Health, including things that we've mentioned, right? Group play therapy, filial therapy, CNA treatment planning, child adolescent treatment planning, I should say, and trauma-focused integrative play therapy. This is our training staff, Sammy and Gloria, of course. We also have Mariana Shively, who is our other play therapy supervisor that provides bilingual services for us as well, as well as Irene, who you saw earlier. They are our team lead. And then Stephanie, who comes out of our Lawrenceville Center, trains with us as well. So this is our timeline, and the reason we have this up here is because an RPT stands for Registered Play Therapist, RPTS is Registered Play Therapy Supervisor. The faster that we expand the number of us that are RPTs or RPTSs, the bigger our program can grow and the more clinicians we can take. We're limited to how many clinicians we can supervise right now just because we need an RPTS to supervise. I am kind of feeling lonely that I'm the last one up there without their RPT, but I'm eligible next month, so fingers crossed it comes through quickly. This is our current training program schedule. We're already through filial training, so sorry if anybody wants to come to those. We're already done with those. But a couple others that we're really excited about, in particular, is video games and play therapy. Video games is something that even two years ago, we could not have gotten accredited to run for CE's through the Play Therapy Association. But it is slowly being recognized as a really wonderful modality that can be used to assist particularly teens that are really therapy-resistant, right? You can kind of sneak therapy in there to them through video games, and in particular, things like hooking them up to heart rate monitors, and there's video games where they have to slow their breathing in order to progress. And it's also great for things like frustration tolerance, you know, trying to get them to not throw the controller across the room or something like that, as well as building communication between family members. The other one that we're excited about is trauma and play therapy. It's going to be hopefully a part of a series that runs the next couple of years of progressing in terms of the advanced level of understanding of the way that trauma plays into treatment and affects children throughout the state. Next slide, please. So quick little, for more information, if anybody's curious, they can email us there. So a little bit about looking to the future. We would really like to have a standardized curriculum that we offer year-to-year for play therapy trainings so that we can, you know, like we said, pump out as many well-trained clinicians as possible. Similar to what, you know, not exactly the same as what some of the Georgia universities are offering, but something similar for those that don't have the opportunity to attend one of the universities that's offering play therapy training. We also want to have an internship program that everybody wants to come to so that we can really train as many as possible. As I mentioned earlier, this is a population that we've recently gotten really interested in, and that is VA families or the families of veterans. You know, it's an area where we often overlook the trauma that these families experience just in general. Of course, there is mental health treatment available often for the soldiers coming home, but what about their families who have just, you know, their family member's been gone for however many months, and particularly the children who don't understand and maybe don't know if their mom or dad is coming home to them. What does that look like for them? What does that do to their family? And they don't have the same resources available to them that maybe their parents do as a soldier coming home. So we really would like to be able to work specifically with this population and kind of discover what unique needs they have and how we can fill that gap. We also really want to focus on prevention. You know, it's not something that we focus on very often in mental health spaces, but it's something that we're really passionate about. So I wanted to share this study about the adverse childhood experiences, which is a survey that you take that has a number of different experiences that you may have experienced as a child that could be potentially stressful. Anything from witnessing substance abuse of your parent to divorce, right? And for each one that you check yes to, you get one point. So what we know is that a person with four or more aces is at significantly increased health risks, including heart disease, depression, and suicide. Person with seven or more aces, I mean, look at that, triple the risk of lung cancer and 3.5 times the risk of heart disease, which is the number one killer of adults in the US. And I should mention the risk of suicide is the third highest killer of teens in the US. We also know that a person with six or more aces has a... We also know that a person with six or more ACEs has a 20-year lifespan shorter than somebody with zero. So one of our goals is to really make this a zero across the board for Georgia. Recently, I was pulling numbers on Georgia. Our most recent ACEs study in Georgia was in 2022. We were at 60% at least one ACE for every adult in Georgia. However, what I do know and what I want to caution about that study is that it was being done by doctors, so that excludes anyone that doesn't have access to healthcare, right? They would not have been receiving that survey. All right, any questions?
I just want to say thank you for the important work that you do. I know I've had decades of experience working in the early childhood space and in education K through 12, and I will say this is something that is hard to access for parents in Rockdale. We have one play therapist in town, and she stays very busy. So this is a great plan to develop other trained professionals to help families in the community, you know, as they process trauma. And this definitely will help. And I would encourage you to know that United Way, the United Way Local Group, for years we've talked about strengthening the education experience for children by creating a network where we test the pre-K children and really look at outcomes and how we can do more focused programs for those children who need it the most. So this is definitely something that we'd be interested in in Rockdale. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. It's really good to hear from you again. I had that opportunity to tour the center and to hear the excitement and enthusiasm of the program. I think the thing that stuck in my head is that you have babies that you work with, just months-old babies. And how important could that be when you can get those babies some therapy, work with their mothers or their fathers, and set a different pace, a different track for their life by getting them that young? That has always stuck with me, was how young you were able to start. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We appreciate your time today, Jennifer, with your team. All right, next, we have our budget presentation. I'm Director Sue Sanders.
Good morning. Thank you. PR will be pulling up the presentation in just a moment, but this is the monthly March Budget to Actuals that you'll be seeing shortly. And at this time, all departments should have about 75% remaining, so we do not have any major concerns. Overall, we have a little over 5% more remaining than our target at this point in the year. So when you see it pop up, you'll see we actually did modified the report for this month to include year-to-date numbers for 2024 and 2023 per department, so you can actually compare where we're trending. And some of the departments are actually less than where we were last year in 2024. So overall, the budget looks really, people are remaining on track, and the departments are really looking at their expenditures. So like I said, no major concerns from finance. We continue to monitor it monthly.
And while we're waiting for that to pull up, can you talk a little bit about, you know, what we've termed as revenue recovery with our grants and things like that and what we're working on?
Yes, so right now, the Grants Manager, Austin, and his Grants Team are working on looking at all of, going over all of the grants, putting them all in a spreadsheet, actually looking at making sure that we have recovered reimbursements from the grants. And we've actually recovered almost $500,000 that we hadn't pulled down yet, that should have been pulled down throughout the past couple of years. So he continues to work on that. And really, he came in in January and has spent a lot of time going over what's in grants, like I said, having an overall spreadsheet, an overall picture, especially with the uncertainty of federal funding moving forward. That's really important. Last week, a message was sent out to department heads, and then this morning, one went out to elected officials with an actual form for the grants, each grant that they have, what the total is, the programmatic reports and everything, so that he can get a full database rather than the piecemeal. So those are due back to him within the next 10 days, I believe. So he's really been working hard. So if you look at, they don't have the one here with the green, but I will definitely send that out, and we'll make sure that it's on the website as far as the departments that are under budget. But I do know that the Board of Commissioners is under about $170,000 at this point. Planning and development was under about $200,000 when I looked at those numbers. And then the items in blue are mainly quarterly payments, so there's really no major concerns with their budgets.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. We're good.
Okay. This will be on the website by the end of the day.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have our judicial and administrative complex update.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
I've got a slide coming. Perfect. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm here to provide an update for the JAC Project for Quarter Two of 2025. As a reminder, as a reminder, you can find project up-to-date information about the project on our website at www.reimaginerockdale.com. Perfect slide. I am pleased to announce that the project will surpass its local participation goals of 10% and our diversity goal of 20%. While subcontracts are being processed, we are projecting our local participation goals to be at 13.9%, and our diversity goals to be at 22.5%. As subcontracts are being executed, we have dedicated a section of our website to highlight all of our local and diversity participation. So far, we have highlighted four companies in the past. That's one company per month for 2025. As you can see above, it's our Partner Spotlight. In the past, we have so far acknowledged Performance Electrical Contract LLC, Strictly Mechanical, Knight Construction and Associates, Inc., and Ventex Electric. So that's one of the ways that we like to put a spotlight on all of our local and diverse vendors that are building this community. Next slide, please. As you can see to the left, we have made significant progress over the past few months with mass excavation and implementing underground water management systems. We have transformed the landscape, making way for our next milestones. So what you see right above is the mass excavation of the courthouse, and over to your right is the building footprint of the administrative building. Next slide, please. The photo on your left is a photo of us placing aggregate piers, which is a crucial part to provide foundation support and ensuring that the structure is load-bearing, also allowing distribution of the weight of the building to be spread evenly across the ground. The photo on your right shows the installation of rebar for the administrative building, which is required for all of our construction-related activities. So the photo with the crane is our CM@RIS installing rebar for our foundation walls. Next slide. In addition, sorry, we have poured concrete foundation walls, which you can see in the photo of the left, which will provide a strong, durable base for the structure. On the right, alongside this, we have also constructed underground detention pond designed for managing excess rainwater runoff. Next slide. In addition, we have constructed, we are conducting waterproofing activities for the elevator pit, which is identified in the photo in the left. And the purpose of the waterproofing membrane that you see there will ensure that a long-term protection against moisture infiltration for the facility. The photo on the right shows that we are around 80% complete with laying underground storm and sanitary sewer lines for the project, which are critical for proper drainage and wastewater management. Next slide. As it relates to our construction contractual time spent on the project, we are at 20% complete with 12% of our budget spent so far. Next slide. Planned activities for Quarter Two and Quarter Three of 2025 will focus on waterproofing the foundations, installing underground MEP roughends for both buildings, pouring of on-slap concrete and on-deck concrete, and the erection of our structural steel. So around mid-June, you will start seeing actual steel being erected on the site, so that's very exciting. Next slide. The project will also collaborate with the Rockdale County Procurement Department to create bid packages for the following scopes above, which is our low voltage, audiovisual, and furniture, which is projected for public bids in late 2025. Next slide. Are there any questions?
No. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. All right, and now we'll move to our proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Do you want to read it for us?
Sure. So of course, I have my Mental Health Matters shirt on today, and during my public comments, I'm going to talk about four different mental health events happening this Saturday. So May is Mental Health Month, whereas nearly one in five adults and one in five adolescents in the United States live with a mental illness impacting families, communities, and our society at large. And whereas mental health significantly influences every aspect of a person's life, including emotional, social, environmental, and financial well-being, with significant disparities among racially and ethnically diverse communities. And whereas suicide has tragically become the second-leading cause of death among individuals 15 to 24, with a 17.3% increase in the use of anxiety medications among teenagers since 2010, highlighting the urgent need for greater mental health support and awareness. And whereas adopted from the National Association of Counties, NACO, the Stepping Up Initiative has grown into an impactful community movement with collaborative partners to reduce the number of people involved in the criminal justice system who have a mental health and/or a co-occurring to substance use challenge. Over the last 10 years, the Stepping Up Initiative emphasizes peer involvement, setting bold goals, and pursuing a clear strategy that seeks to move the needle. And whereas Rockdale County recognizes the vital importance of mental health awareness and is committed to supporting the emotional and psychological well-being of all residents, we encourage every member of our community to prioritize mental wellness, seek help when needed, and extend compassion to others. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim May 25th as, May 2025, as Mental Health Awareness Month. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 13th day of May 2025. Signed by Chairwoman Janice Van Ness, Commissioner Post One, Tawanya Smith, and Commissioner Post Two, Dorian Williams.
Very good. Thank you. We also have a proclamation for Youth Mental Health and Wellness Expo that's coming up soon. So let me just summarize and give you the date.
Right, we've got the district attorney here this morning, too, to present.
Oh, yes, come on.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Do you want to say a little bit about this?
If I may.
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Chairman, Chairwoman Van Ness, and Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Smith, thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. I am calling on all of our Rockdale County community and citizens to come and join us this Saturday, May the 17th, from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the lawn at Wheeler Park for our Second Annual Youth Mental Health and Wellness Expo. We are truly excited to be partnering with, of course, Parks and Recreation to bring this event to the community this year. As we know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I'm sure some may be asking yourselves, well, why is a DA in the prosecution arm of public safety, what is their role in this mental health space? Well, let me say this. Since taking office, it has been a part of my initiative to make sure that we are investing in our youth and that we are ensuring that we are working in the space of prevention, that we can prevent those who are homegrown right here in Rockdale County from coming into our criminal justice system at all. And when we invest in our youth's mental, behavioral, and physical wellness, we're not just improving lives, but we are preventing crime before it happens. By focusing on mental health and wellness, we reduce risk factors like violence, substance abuse in youth, and school dropouts, and we are replacing them with purpose, confidence, and community support. Awareness, education, and resources help our young people build resilience, emotional control, and healthy decision-making skills. Wellness is not just about feeling good, it's about giving our youth the tools they need to cope, connect, and thrive in every area of life. As a part of one of our grants that we have in my office, we are able to bring this Youth Mental Health and Wellness Expo to the community again this year. But we are so honored to be partnering and collaborating with so many offices here in Rockdale County and community members who have said, this is so important. We want to be a part of this as well. There's an African proverb that says, if you want to go somewhere far, go alone. If you want to go, I'm sorry, if you want to go somewhere fast, go alone. If you want to go somewhere far, go together. This expo is really about the community collaborating and saying, together, we want our youth to thrive, and we know it will have a far-reaching impact on our community and youth moving forward. So we are asking all of our guardians, caregivers, parents, to bring your youth, all ages. We have a lot of fun events to happen, we've got bouncy houses, face painting, cotton candy, ICs, all the things happening there, but also incredibly important information for our youth. And I will say to those parents who may say, you know, my child is just fine, they don't need it. What I will say is, I pray so. What I will also say is the data shows that now, more than ever, our youth are in need of these services. So if you don't think you need it now, maybe you know a child in the future who will need it, or maybe yours will in the future. But come on out and learn something about this, our Mental Health and Wellness Expo, and we're just so happy to be able to bring it again this year. Thank you so much.
I also want to thank you for your foresight in working with the other partners for this project, because we also know it's not just about the children, right? It's about parenting, it's about the bond you create, and sometimes in the absence of activities, you may just hang out at home. But I think this is a great opportunity to partner with not only other agencies, but in part of our team in Rockdale, but also with our families and get them to make it more of a habit to be outside, interacting with others.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you for your leadership. And here's your proclamation. Would you like me to read it?
Please, thank you.
All right. Whereas, Rockdale County District Attorney Alicia Johnson demonstrates a steadfast commitment to the youth in our community through several programs to promote productive activities and overall youth wellness. The DA's office is recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month by hosting the Second Annual Youth Mental Health and Wellness Expo at the Youth Mental Health and Wellness Expo at the lawn at Wheeler Park. And whereas, this expo is a dynamic community engagement event focused on promoting mental wellness, self-care, and empowerment a young, among young people. It provides attendees with access to interactive booths, educational workshops, and opportunities to connect directly with mental health professionals, offering valuable tools and resources to support emotional and psychological wellness. And whereas, the United States Surgeon General has identified youth mental health as a national priority, reinforcing the need for local initiatives like the Youth Mental Health and Wellness Expo to raise awareness and offer meaningful support. And whereas, the participation of community partners alongside the DA's office for a second year demonstrates their ongoing commitment to support, uplift, and advocate for the mental and emotional well-being of our youth. And whereas, Rockdale County commends the District Attorney's Office and all organizers, partners, and participants of the Youth Mental Health and Wellness Expo for their dedication to fostering a healthier, more informed, and empowered generation. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, in Rockdale County is Youth Mental Health and Wellness Recognition, Recognition Day. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this thirteenth day of May, twenty-twenty-five, signed by myself, Janice Van Ness, Commissioner Post One, Toanya Smith, and Commissioner Post Two, Dr. Doreen Williams.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we're kind of on a child and family track with mental health, I wanted to share now, instead of waiting to the end of the meeting, that, um, we are sponsoring a mental health, uh, symposium this Thursday night called Bridges of Hope Family Empowerment and Connection Symposium. And the emphasis is on the families, because it's, when one person has a mental health issue, it can impact the entire family. It starts at five, it's at the Career Academy. Dinner is complimentary, stop by, get a sandwich or whatever, we're having sandwiches. We have a keynote speaker coming from, uh, Massachusetts, who has had a nonprofit group for over twenty years that focuses on the work of, of supporting families. And, um, we've got a, a really great panel that'll be speaking. We have a representative from Viewpoint Health, we have Chad Jones, we have Tandy Harris from, uh, D B H D D, we have Ron Fairley, who is, did our housing, um, headed up our housing task force last year, we have Alinda from NAMI, and we have the sheriff also. So, mental health just affects every, just like physical health affects, you know, if you're sick, you can't go to work. If somebody in your family is sick, maybe the mom or the dad has to stay home and can't go to work because of the, the child. It, physical health can impact a family, the same thing happens with a mental, in mental health issues. We know families that have physical health issues that have had to, had to file for bankruptcy because they couldn't pay all their medical bills or pay all the bills, in fact, the same thing happens with mental health. And so, again, this is Mental Health Matters Month, and, um, I invite you to join me Thursday evening at five.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we have public comment, do we have anyone?
So I have received no yellow cards.
Okay.
Anyone attend, okay.
All right, we'll move forward to our approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Ma'am Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Item number six, approval of the minutes.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Item number seven.
Item one-eighty-seven is with Forensic Medicine Associates Incorporated through the Coroner's Office. This is for the Annual Medical Examiner Consulting Services Change Order Number One to Contract Twenty-Twenty-Three-Dash-Ninety-Four. It's a price increase from a hundred thousand dollars a year to a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. This ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Ma'am Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, and I'd just like to note, um, we appreciate, uh, our coroner's work together in a collaborative spirit to, um, walk us through this contract, and so thank you for your dedication to Rockdale County. At this time, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, new business.
Okay, item two-twelve is with Vortex Services LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is for two projects combined for the Almond Branch Bore at four-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-six dollars and Fox Chase, in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-five dollars for a total of eight-hundred-eleven-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-four dollars and twelve cents. This includes the cost of the bond at eleven-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. For the buy-board cooperative pricing, this is at ninety days, this is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Item two-thirteen is with co- cooperative corporate environmental risk management through SERM for the Water Resources Department, this is for the Asset Inventory Management Sewer Rehabilitation Program, Sewer Preventative Maintenance and Engineering Staff Augmentation. This is change order number eight to Contract Twenty-Twenty-Dash-EIGHTEEN. This is to reduce the term to six months to allow for the services to be bid out, thereby reducing the amount to one million, three-hundred-five-thousand dollars. It expires September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, this is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Ma'am Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
And if the board would like, we could take item two-fourteen and two-fifteen together since they're both transportation items, so I will just continue to read until I'm stopped. So item two-fourteen is with B M and K P C through the Transportation Department, this is for SPLUS five-a roadway rehab project, change order number four to Contract Twenty-Twenty-Three-Dash-Forty-Three to add survey proposal for nineteen-thirty-one Bethel Road, this is an additional six-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-three dollars, this is SPLUS-funded and is a bud- and is a budgeted item. Item two-fifteen is with C M E S Incorporated through the Transportation Department for courtesy Parkway Extension, it's change order number one to Contract Twenty-Twenty-Four-Dash-One-Eighty-Six for the demolition of existing building structures, this is an additional ninety-one-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents, this is for thirty days, this is SPLUS-funded and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve these contracts as presented.
Ma'am Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
And the same with the next few items that are with Parks and Recreation, if you would like to take them collectively, I could do the same as well. Okay, item two-sixteen is with Keystone Wrigley Media Group, B Y U, for Parks and Recreation, this is for the location agreement to film Reunion Impossible at Pine Log Park Basketball Court, it's five-hundred dollars in revenue, the term was April ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and this is submitted for ratification. Item two-seventeen is with Keystone Wrigley Media Group, B Y U, for the Parks and Recreation, this is for location, release, certify, and completion of review of property for any and all damages while filming Reunion Impossible at Pine Log Park Basketball Court, this is for a signature only. Item two-eighteen is with Jerry Paye Turf and Irrigation through the Parks and Recreation Department, this is for Toro Workman and Groomer Equipment for upkeep and maintenance of green space of athletic fields, this is a statewide contract in the amount of twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-five dollars and eighty-seven cents, this is a one-time purchase, this is through the C I P Fund and is a budgeted item. The next item is two-nineteen with Michael Diaz, and I'm so glad I was told how to pronounce that name, because I would have said that differently, through the Parks and Recreation Department for an instructor for pickleball lessons at Wheeler Park Lawn. The estimated not-to-exceed amount to the vendor is twenty thousand dollars, this is revenue from participant, from participants in a split of seventy percent to the instructor and thirty percent to the county, this is through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, with an option to renew two twelve-month periods, this is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve these contracts as presented.
I second the motion, but I need to say something first.
Sure.
Okay, so two-sixteen and two-seventeen are with Keystone Wrigley Media out of B Y U, that's my alma mater, Brigham Young University.
Duly noted, Commissioner.
And my sister used to work for Keystone Media Group many years ago, so you can imagine my excitement when I saw that they came to Conyers to do something here.
We hope they come back again. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Okay, so item two-twenty is with the Comprehensive Family Care through the Juvenile Court for Strengthening Families Program in an amount not to exceed nine-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, this is through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, with option to renew two additional one-year terms, this is grant-funded and is a budgeted item.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Item two-twenty-one is with American Facility Services Incorporated through the Sheriff's Office for janitorial custodial services at various county locations, this is change order number one to Contract Twenty-Twenty-Three-Dash-One-Seventy-Two to add professional cleaning services for the Sheriff's Office on a seven, seven-month test period, it's an additional three-thousand-four-hundred dollars per month, the term is June first, twenty-twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, this is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Ma'am Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Item two-twenty-two is a memorandum, uh, or memorandums of understanding for the public safety employees through fire rescue to reside at Soaring Heights Community Apartment Complex for residents with disabilities at a reduced monthly amount, this is at no cost to the county, and the employee is responsible for all payments made to Soaring Heights, and the employees that are currently residing there with their terms are also listed below.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve these contracts as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
I wonder if we need an explanation of what Soaring Heights is.
Okay, uh, would you like to take this one, Chief Robinson, or would you like, okay, okay?
I can explain.
Okay, well, we all could, actually, any of us could.
So Soaring Heights is a wonderful program in our community that allows developmentally, uh, delayed adults to live, um, also with first responders in the same complex, so they, while they live independently, we also have apartments designated for our first responders, um, some may be teachers, some may be, uh, from fire rescue, some from, uh, our sheriff's office, um, but it's a nice blended model that I think will be replicated in other places across the country, and so we're proud of what Soaring Heights is doing now.
Very well said, we are very proud.
Thank you.
And so if the board would like, we could take item two-twenty-three and two-twenty-four collectively as well. So item two-twenty-three is with Jericho Design Group LLC through the General Services Department, this is for design professional services for the Judicial and Administrative Complex, change order number one to Contract Twenty-Twenty-Three-Dash-One-Eleven, this is for the design phase for changes to the administration building, courthouse, and the increased parking deck capacity, it's an additional two-million-four-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars, this is no increase to the project completion time, and this is through the Judicial Administrative Complex Fund. And then item two-twenty-four is with McCarthy Barnsley, a joint venture, this is through the General Services Department for the Judicial Administrative Complex, this is a deductive change order number five to Contract Twenty-Twenty-Three-Dash-One-Forty-Nine, this is to transfer funding of two-million-four-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars from owner's contingency portion of the project to the design portion to cover costs, this is no increase to the net project and no increase to project completion time, this is through the Judicial Administrative Complex Fund.
Since we have the team here, can we just hear for a minute from them about the project? Doug, would you, or your group like to speak?
Offered by
All right, yes. The group efforts. You won't need it today.
So, um, we are doing a great work out there, um, and it's been a, a long road, I remember the task force serving with you and, uh, came up with great recommendations, um, things are moving well, um, we do have some new players that we're responding to and making sure that the complex is going to be theirs when it's totally finished and built, um, and, uh, I think those, that's part of what you're seeing here. And again, the, the, the parking deck increased capacity, which I think everybody in the county and downtown agree is, is needed and will support the businesses that will be located close to this complex, so I feel really good about the progress and, uh, Andrew, you got anything else? Any, any questions?
Director Hamer, I think it would be helpful for the public if you could talk about, um, when people see this change order, it can make them a little nervous about funding and cost for the project, can you talk about how we're, um, finding a way to cover those costs?
Absolutely, um, yes, change order always is an ugly, uh, term, unfortunately, and I'm, and I'm glad we took these two together, uh, because often in construction, you create a project budget at the beginning of the project, you have all the different categories, and oftentimes you have to go back and forth between them, and the total project doesn't increase, um, but of course, when we come to the board, each individual contract has to be adjusted, and so that's the two that you have together. So, to explain this, um, you really have to go back about two years, um, when we began the project, uh, the previous board, um, uh, gave the different parameters that we were working under, uh, we put out a bid for the, an R F Q for the architectural services, um, and that was a whole process, we received numerous bids, we narrowed it down to a, a shortlist, they had an evaluation committee, and they finally picked Jericho Design Group, uh, Doug Shaw, uh, represents them. When they presented their cost proposal at the very beginning, it was very, very preliminary, so it was, it was based on a construction cost of about eighty-two million dollars. Um, and again, this is before inflation, uh, before some of the recent changes, um, I even had a, a little meme that I used to, that my wife sent me, and she said, hey, you're going to take me out to someplace very expensive, and it showed like a nice table at the lumber aisle at Lowe's, if you remember that. Um, so all the different, uh, cost increases of the project, uh, that we've experienced, that we've all experienced, so, um, that was very preliminary, they did all the programming, we went back to the courts, went back to the administration, put all of that together, uh, looked at renovation versus new construction, trying to be as efficient as we could with the existing facilities we had, and, um, when all that was done, uh, about middle of last year, end of last year, the total construction budget was about a hundred and twelve million dollars. Um, so the total construction budget that was established by the previous board is a hundred and forty million dollars, and that hasn't changed throughout the project. Uh, that includes the construction cost, the soft cost, architectural, the commissioning, materials testing, furniture, security, badges, everything that goes into the projects, that's the total, total project budget and it hasn't changed. The architectural portion of it is six-point-eight-five percent, that was their bid cost, uh, uh, when we established that contract, so their contract should be at six-point-eight-five percent of the construction cost, since that, uh, was changed from eighty-two million to a hundred and twelve million, thirty million dollars difference, that represents about a two-million-dollar change. I understand that's a, that's a, a large number when you look at it, but there's a huge amount of work that goes into it, um, I'm sure Doug would have loved to get a check written to him personally, but it doesn't go to him, it goes to structural engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, I mean, you know, there's a whole, uh, uh, slew of people that have been working on that for about two years, so, um, this is really, the majority of this is an adjustment to that. Uh, in addition, we also made some, um, at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, beginning of two thousand and twenty-five, uh, a lot of the elected officials changed. Uh, Judge Mumford retired, Judge Bills became the chief, uh, court, Judge, uh, Wood went from juvenile to superior. We have a, a new state court, Judge Reed was appointed. So, um, there's been a lot of changes since we be, excuse me, since we began the project. The judges made some requests to make their areas work a little better, a little more efficient. Uh, they thought through it a little bit more for where the jury would go when they leave, and they have fifteen minutes, and they all have to go to the bathroom, where are the restrooms and things like that. So, uh, we went through another exercise with the, with the new judges that, um, created another, um, group of changes as well that was added into it. And then lastly, about the same time, it's like a perfect storm, uh, but in a good way, the city of Conyers approached the county and said, we would like you to take the two-story parking deck. You have, uh, a little over two hundred spaces, and we really need more downtown. We all know that when we go to park downtown. The Citizens SLOSS Committee, uh, matched, uh, that request as well to us. So we're increasing the parking deck to, uh, well over four hundred spaces. So if you take all three of those together and you lump them all into this, that's what this represents, the change to the architect. And again, that's for all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and a huge portion of it, the structural engineering for the parking garage need to be revised. So that's, that represents that portion of it. Um, we do have, uh, contingency worked into the construction side of things, into the total project budget. And so we're using that to cover the architectural costs. So again, the total a hundred and forty mil, I know I've said that like three times now, but, um, it was important to us, our entire team, as well as the design team, Jericho and McCarthy Barnsley, that we would, um, come in at or under the budget when we finish the project, and we're on track for that.
Under is my goal.
Under would be the care, yes ma'am. You've said that to me many times.
Like twenty maybe, so, okay, very good. And thank you. That answers our questions. I appreciate it. And thank you to all of you on the team for making this happen, so I appreciate you. All right.
Motion for both of these items, two twenty-three and two twenty-four.
Madam Chair, I motion that, um, we approve these contracts as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, I have motions and a second. If, if, uh, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, and then we could take the requisitions collectively as well, if that pleases the board. All right, item two twenty-five is requisition through the Water Resources Department for Ascentis Co- Corporation. This is for the weekly locker uniforms, cleaning goods, and services for twenty twenty-five. This is a renewal of unit price contract. The amount is forty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars per year. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item two twenty-six is a requisition through Water Resources Department for Southeastern Security Professionals for the installation of security access at the RWR Tatum Road Central Maintenance Building. This is a unit price contract in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item two twenty-seven is a requisition through Water Resources for United Maintenance Incorporated for the labor and materials to replace five hanging heaters in RWR Warehouse at the Tatum Road Facility. It's a unit price contract in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred forty-four dollars. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item two twenty-eight is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Brown and Caldwell. This is for services to develop a hydraulic model for RWR's Quig Sewer Basin. This is pre-qualified vendor. The amount is two hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred and five dollars. This is through the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item two twenty-nine is a requisition through General Services Department for Prime Construction. This is for fire station number seven roof replacement. This is an ACCG claim, and it's for the cooperative contract source well. The amount is seventy-one thousand dollars, and it was through the CIP Fund and is a budgeted item.
Can I ask you why we needed a roof replacement for that, for a fire station?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. Uh, part of it was, uh, just the age of the roof itself, but we received, um, in the last couple storms, there was hail damage and some, or wind damage, uh, and so we put in the claim. The adjuster came out and agreed that there was damage due to the storms, and so they, they recommended roof replacement.
Okay, and so ACCG, that our insurance is paying for some of that?
That's correct. That minus our deductible, that's correct.
So we have a fifteen thousand dollar deductible, so we've already received the check for almost fifty-six thousand. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, item two thirty is a requisition through the General Services Department for Game Time Care of Dominica Recreation Products. This is at the Johnson Park All-Inclusive Playground for Cooperative Contract slash Omnia. The amount is two hundred forty-four thousand two hundred sixteen dollars and forty-six cents. This is funded through the Impact Fee Fund and is a budgeted item. Item two thirty-one is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Dana Safety Supply Incorporated for emergency equipment for five twenty-twenty-five Dodge Durangos. The amount is ninety-one thousand seventy dollars. This is SLOSS-funded and is a budgeted item and is submitted for ratification. Item two thirty-two is a requisition through the Technology Services Department for Law and Order Technology LLC for six Panasonic Rugged Laptops for GSA Federal Contract, and this, the amount is eighteen thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item two twenty-three is a requisition for the clerk, through the Clerk of Superior and State Courts for Janice Morris, Clerk of Court, Clerk of Superior and State Court Jury Account. These are the funds for the jury card payment. The amount is one hundred thousand dollars through the general fund and is a budgeted item. So those would be items for requisitions twenty twenty-five through two thirty-three.
I move to approve these requisitions as presented.
Um, before I do that, is it possible to have Parks and Recreation talk about that playground that's two hundred? I know it's just not a simple playground.
Right.
Interim Director Wilson said I had to come up too, so. I tell you what, I'll cover the, the amount, and then she could talk about the program. So, um, as always, we have great collaboration with Parks and Recreation. Uh, so this will be impact fee funded, and it's, there's three different elements to it. There's a, a sort of a typical playground. I think it's a five to twelve playground. Uh, so that's a small, is that correct? Small playground. Then there's a swing set, which we also don't have at Johnson Park. But the, the great element, um, and it seems to be the theme for today, uh, it's a sensory playground. Uh, so it has all the different devices on there for children who are, are challenged in that area so that can also play, and they're not necessarily having to climb the swings and the other items, but it has these other areas, so.
So, uh, this sensory playground will actually be the first in its kind in Rockdale County. So it'll go along with our therapeutic recreation arm, our division within Parks and Recreation, as well as air, our adaptive inclusive, inclusive recreation of Rockdale. So it's, um, bringing a sense of belonging so kids with disabilities can play along, right along with their peers. Um, so it's going to be a great benefit. We work together, um, cooperatively with our, um, adaptive inclusive and therapeutic, um, special needs, uh, activists within the public school system. So it, it'll be a, a great benefit for us, so, yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Okay, so you had a motion to approve the requisitions, items two twenty-five through two thirty-three.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second for all of the items discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, and if you'd like to take item two thirty-four and two thirty-five together? So item two thirty-four is an expenditure request for Amelia Technologies USA through the Parks and Recreation Department for credit card and network fees. This is contract twenty, a change order to contract twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-seven in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. The term is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This does not include the month of November twenty twenty-four. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item two thirty-five is an expenditure request through MCCI LLC through the Technology Services Department for the renewal of laser fiche. The coverage period is June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five through June thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. It's, it's a change order to contract twenty twenty-two dash one thirty. The amount is twenty-two thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and six cents per year. Last year's cost was twenty thousand six hundred dollars and seventy-five cents per year. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve these expenditure requests as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Um, madam clerk, does, does twenty twenty-five dash two thirty-four need to be a ratification?
Um, let me look at the expenditure request to see. I would think if it has already been paid, then the answer would be yes.
So it has not been paid, so it would just be a normal item. These are, um, past invoices.
Okay, very good. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item two thirty-six is a request for surplus of equipment from the Clerk of Court's Office and through fire and rescue.
Madam Chair, I move to declare these items as surplus as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion carries.
Item two thirty-seven is a future land use case twenty twenty-five dash zero-two. An ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's comprehensive plan as amended for property located at twenty-five sixty-seven Northeast Jeez Mill Road from the Technology Park Future Land Use category to the Medium Density Residential Future Land Use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first read and refer the ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item two thirty-eight is rezoning case twenty twenty-five dash zero-one. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning twenty-five sixty-seven Northeast Jeez Mill Road from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item two thirty-nine is rezoning case twenty twenty-five dash zero-four. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning nineteen fifty-five Flat Shoals Road from R-one Single Family Residential District to C-one Local Commercial District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
All right, um, I have a motion and a second. Um, I do, I do want to note and just talk about the fact that typically when we do rezonings, we like to see a progressive zoning, so typically we would not, uh, we would take an R-one and maybe move it to something like offices institutional, that type of thing. But rarely would we see R-one to C-one. So this, um, case is simply referring it to the Planning Commission.
So this morning, uh, first reads are a formality and to make sure that it can get dropped into the public hearing process, so that's correct. So what you're doing this morning is allowing these applicants to go into the public hearing process.
And I'm conflicted about that because there's, if it came right back to us, I would absolutely vote in a different way than what they would probably like. So, um, I guess I'm going to defer to Director Gardner for any advice of if, if our protocol is normally just to move it to the Planning Commission, even though it's a zoning that typically would not fall in line with what our land use map recommends.
When I met with Director Gardner yesterday, in fact, I have the note written on here that, um, they are willing to amend it to, oh, aye.
All right, so Director Rutledge, um, so, so not to lead anyone to fault toe, would it be more time, more conducive to go ahead and deny now and let them apply properly? Would that be a quicker way for them to get the end result?
No. My advice would be to proceed with the first read since it's on your agenda for today, and then let it go through the public hearing process. And if we want to deal with the way that applicants and applications are received in the planning department, we might want to do that separately.
Okay, I hear you.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay.
Was it just one nay? Just want to make sure I got it.
Thank you.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, item two forty is rezoning case twenty twenty-five dash zero-five. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning zero Southeast Parker Road from C-two to general commerc, C-two General Commercial District to C-one Local Commercial District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item two forty-one is rezoning case twenty twenty-five dash zero-six. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning fourteen oh five Southwest Smyrna Road, thirteen seventy-five Southwest Smyrna Road, nineteen oh one Southwest Flat Shoals Road, Still Meadow, Southwest Still Meadow Road, thirteen oh one Southwest Still Meadow Road, and thirteen twenty Southwest Still Meadow Road from R-one Single Family Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ord-
Second, I will note for the record that I will abstain from this as a member of the church.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you.
Directly.
Thank you for pointing that out. I have that down in the record.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, item two forty-two is rezoning case twenty twenty-five dash zero-seven. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning Southwest Iris Drive from C-two General Commercial to RM Residential Multifamily to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. And for the public's, um, interest, where is this located on Iris Drive?
Let me pull up the map.
It's kind of hard. It's located right near Stone Crest.
It's, it's close. Yeah, you're, yeah, you're right. It's close. Okay, that's right. It's right on the line. In fact, I think some of this is actually in DeKalb.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Everything that was stated is correct. It is on the, um, county border with, um, Rockdale and DeKalb County, and it, a portion is within DeKalb County.
Okay, thank you. That saves the public a lot of time and energy from trying to figure out where it's speaking about. All right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item two forty-three is a volunteer appointment with the Keep Conyers Rockdale Beautiful Council for Kurt Peters to fill the unexpired term of Preston Baldwin. The term would be March twenty twenty-five through March twenty twenty-nine.
I move to approve this appointment as requested.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, and I'd like to thank, um, Kurt Peters for his upcoming service on the board.
All right. Item two forty-four is a budget amendment request through the Rockdale Water Resources Department in the amount of twenty-four million one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars from fund balance to automotive one hundred fifteen thousand, technology one million forty thousand, building three million eight hundred fifty-five thousand, and infrastructure in the amount of nineteen million one hundred fifty-five thousand.
Madam Chair, I have- An explanation on that?
As far as the, um, financial explanation, I'll let Director P. talk about the capital itself. Um, in the past, we haven't done this as far as the budget amendment, so this is another transparency measure as far as, um, taking, this is the way it should be done. What finance recommends, you take it from their fund balance and specifically say that it is for capital. So moving it to that account, um, the director has provided a whole list of their capital item needs. And so that, that's what this is, a financial, um, adjustment. And then you can talk about the capital.
Okay, and, um, and good morning.
Morning.
And Chief Simmons is absolutely correct. We're just moving it from the fund balance. Um, this helps the department be able to manage our capital projects. Um, right now, um, once we do a capital project, we try to keep up with- Right now, once we do a capital project, we try to keep up with the amount that we're spending on capital projects. This right here will be a line item on our operating budget, and then we'll know exactly what we're spending.
And can you address the building at 3.8 million?
The building at 3.8 million? We have a lot of repairs that needs to be done to our facilities, our wastewater facilities, our water treatment facilities. We have five wastewater treatment facilities. We have several pump stations, 31 pump stations. So it's just a lot of repairs that needs to be done to keep everything operable for water resources.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much for that explanation.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this request as presented.
My second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 245 is with the Public Facilities Authority, a reappointment of Tenae Davis. The term is September 1st, 2024, through August 31st, 2027. This is a district attorney appointee.
I move to approve this reappointment as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And I'd like to thank Tenae Davis for her service on the PFA. All right.
Item 246 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Rust Truck Center of Georgia. This is for a complete engine rebuild for RWR's 2010 International Vacuum Truck. The amount is $41,520.51. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 247 is a temporary construction easement through the Transportation Department at 1931 Bethel Road. This is in, for Kenneth DeAngelo.
I move to approve this easement as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. And I'll just note for the record, we are really excited about this easement so we can go ahead and move forward with the reclamation and repaving of Bethel Road. That has been a long time coming, so thank you.
Thank you.
So we have all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and the motion carries.
Item 248 is the Chris Kyle's Experience LLC through the Parks and Recreation Department, part of the summer concert series band performance at Costly Mill Park. The amount is $6,000 for a two-hour performance. The date is June 29th, 2025. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Director Sanders, can you address that?
So we are moving the location to the lawn at Wheeler Park, just to note that.
Okay, and will the, will the cost be the same since there will be no stage needed?
So we will not have to rent the stage, which was around $3,000. So we'll be using the stage that is there.
Okay, but the cost listed is what?
That's for the performer itself. So that's just the performer, and then other items are handled by Parks and Recreation for the actual performance.
Okay.
So for this item, the location should change?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
No.
It's okay.
Super efficient, just so efficient.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. All right, at this time, we have board comments.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. We had the opportunity to go to the fire recruit graduation, which was very, very nice. It was great to have those new firefighters, and we thank them for choosing Rockdale to protect. We also had that KCRB meeting last night, Keep Conyers Rockdale Beautiful, last night. Thank you for everybody that came out and participated. We have a lot of great things coming down the pipe for Rockdale County, and we will need everybody's participation. And I am going to leave you with this quote, but I'm going to also yield some of my time to Parks and Recs. Challenges are what makes life interesting, and overcoming them is what makes life meaningful. I'm going to yield now to Parks and Recreation, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, ma'am.
So May, we are bringing some additional cultural events to the county. We have, May 25th, we have our annual beach opening at Costly Mill Park. That'll be from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. It's free admission. So we encourage all our families to bring your, you know, your lawn chairs, your smiles, and your energy. We'll have food vendors out. The rec and crew will be out there providing programming, games, and fun. So again, that's at Costly Mill, May 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. In addition, we also have, our May calendar for our rec and crew is still up and on our Facebook page and our website, so just follow those dates. We will be out on Saturday in collaboration with DA Johnson and the Mental, the Youth Wellness Expo at the lawn. In addition, we do have our first summer concert series. Thank you for approving. So Six Flow will be performing on June, excuse me, June 29th at the lawn at Wheeler Park. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And that address is 1400 Parker Road. Please bring your lawn chairs and enjoy vendors that'll be on site as well. As far as the Costly Mill Beach Hours that will be posted on our website, it's currently on our website. It's currently going to be on our social media pages. You can also reach out to us directly at Costly Mill Park. And it is $4 for general admission and free for children three and under. Cash payments only.
And there will be a lifeguard for the beach.
Yes, yes. We have three to four lifeguards at a time on rotation.
Excellent.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Also, we have our Rockdale County Falcons tackle football and cheerleading registration going on now. So we have an early bird registration that's going on through May 23rd, and that includes ages five to 12. So please, if you can, scan the QR code. There is a flyer. Scan that QR code or stop by to Johnson Park Recreation Center. Please ensure you bring your birth certificate, your ID, and you will have to sign a participant waiver. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I brought your book.
Oh, yeah, I brought it to you. You like it?
Yeah, very nice.
Our digital brochure, yes. It is up online and ready, May through August 2025.
So is the best place to go online, or is it best to go to your Facebook page?
You can go to both. So there is an actual link on our Parks and Rec page on a county website that has program brochure. You can click that, or you can follow us on Facebook or Instagram, and you can see that digital brochure as well. And come to Johnson Park as well.
And you have a lot of swim lessons.
Yes.
I know a lot of kids and adults that need swim lessons.
Yes, yes.
Excellent job. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Williams.
So May is Mental Health Awareness Month. We've talked about that a lot today. Just let me go through these events all happening this Saturday. The first one, well, this one is Thursday night. This is the one I'm sponsoring on Family Empowerment and Connections Symposium. Then there is on Saturday, District Attorney Alicia talked about the Youth Family Day at the lawn. And that will, I think she said 11:00 to 2:00. There it is, right there, 11:00 to 2:00, the lawn at Wheeler Park. I don't think they have this picture. I just received this announcement last night. It came from the Way Community Church, and they are holding what they're calling a Rhythm and Rest Fest that will be this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. And it's wellness resources, generational conversations, food trucks, wellness rooms, outdoor games, DJ music. And it's a mental health event. And the email said that they are looking at different, providing experiences for you to help yourself mentally with your mental health. Art room, a music room, that different kinds of ways of supporting your mental health. And then you can round out the evening. You can, you can be gone all day Saturday. You could round out the evening from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the pavilion. And this is, I think, our fourth annual, maybe fifth annual, I'm not sure. Peace Under the Pavilion, sponsored by the Stepping Up Initiative and NAMI, Rockdale and Newton County NAMI. If there'll be guided yoga and meditation, a sound meditation bath, community art collaboration, free food, haircuts, resources, vendors, and more. So that has always been a really, really empowering event. And so I invite each of you to intervene all of the four events coming up in the next few days. And I invite all of our audience and all of those watching and can hear about them. And speaking of the Way Community Church, they held a town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago on May 3rd. That was sponsored by Representative Dorian Carter. I had the opportunity of participating in that and talking about some of the road projects that are going on here. Of course, they wanted to know about, I can never remember the names, but the House Bill 238, is that it?
Senate Bill 238.
Senate Bill 238. There was, you know, some discussion about that. Representative Carter spoke a lot about that. So I encourage everybody when, oh, that's right, there is a mental health video. So we'll hold off on that for just a second while I finish. But I encourage everybody to come attend those town hall meetings. It was fairly well attended, but you will get a lot of information from there. And to round that out, we have a mental health video.
Hello, Rockdale County. I'm Dr. Dorian Williams, your Post Two Commissioner. And I want to take a moment to speak from the heart about something that touches all of us, either personally or through someone we love, mental health. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and it's a time for us to raise our voices, lift each other up, and remind every member of our community that it's okay to not be okay. Mental health is just as important as physical health, whether you're managing stress, anxiety, grief, depression, or just trying to juggle the weight of daily life. Please know you are not alone. Here in Rockdale County, we believe in building a community where emotional wellness and mental health are prioritized, support is accessible, and no one suffers in silence. The Rockdale County Human Resources Department has received the Bell Seal for Workplace Mental Health National Certification, which recognizes employers committed to creating mentally healthy workplaces. In fact, Rockdale County employees also have access to mental health first aid classes and certifications. This month and every month, I want to encourage you to take steps toward taking care of your mental health. Here are a few tips that may help. One, check in with yourself. Take five minutes each day to pause, breathe, and reflect on how you're feeling mentally and emotionally. Two, stay connected. Call friends. Talk to a neighbor. Don't underestimate the power of human connection. Find locally events and support groups. NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, has a Rockdale Newton chapter that meets on a regular basis to provide support for those experiencing mental health issues as well as support for their family and friends. Three, move your body. A short walk, stretching, or dancing around the house can help reduce stress and boost your mood. Four, set boundaries. It's okay to say no. Protecting your peace is part of staying healthy. And five, ask for help. There's strength in seeking support, whether from a counselor, a faith leader, or a trusted friend. Don't carry the weight alone. Happy Mental Health Awareness Month, Rockdale County.
Yay. Those are my comments.
Well, I do, I do want to mention in alignment with Mental Health Month and the focus that's going to be made, a great article that went out to a lot of schools and the leadership teams was a movement called I Need Eight. And so if you, you know, if someone were in need, a lot of times people may try and reach out, and people think it's just an average phone call. But a text that says I need eight means somebody really in distress that needs eight minutes from you. So great way to get somebody's attention that may be able to make a difference, so. I did want to say that with summer coming, I know parents are starting to really feel the pressure of what are they going to do all summer? We have a lot of great programs throughout the county, so I'm encouraging parents to make sure you get your plans in order because school is out soon. And I'm grateful that our Parks and Recreation has done such a nice job offering so many options to keep their children busy. And we know academic reinforcement is important even during the summer, so keep their reading skills up. And I did want to also mention that Georgia Department of Transportation did send out information asking for feedback about a sound wall barrier, and that is still open. The deadline, it says, was yesterday, but I'm sure they will still take, take feedback. But this noise barrier would run adjacent to where they're doing the 138 and Interstate 20 construction. And so I will share the phone number that hopefully we can put online with this meeting today. And it says to give comments or concerns regarding the air and noise, you can focus your call to Rodney Leverett at 404-424-9033, or the Air and Noise Section Manager, Miles Kemp, at 404-631-1127, or M Kemp, K-E-M-P, at dot dot G A dot gov. And so I'll also share this with our Public Relations Department to make sure we get it out on our social media channels as well. We are in the middle of our Unified Development Ordinance rewrite, and so that is a pretty important aspect of what we're doing to move Rockdale County forward from a planning and zoning perspective. We currently are under a 120-day moratorium for certain designated businesses. We are also under a housing moratorium for up to six months. And during that time, our company that was selected, the collaborative firm, is now engaging with the public. We were asked to have at least 20 candidates for the committee that will help guide the conversation during that process. And so I'm pleased to announce that we had an overwhelming response, and the 20 positions have been filled. And we will be reaching out to those people to make sure they can attend the meetings that will be interactive with the collaborative firm. In addition, there will be some other teams that are being formed, so even more citizens will be engaged in those teams moving forward. So thank you as always to our great citizenry and the community who are very engaged and excited about the opportunity to serve and learn more about how they can make their community even better. So with that being said, I would like to ask Commissioner, I mean Director Rutledge, if we have a need for executive session.
Yes, Madam Chair. And for today, we need executive session for the purpose of discussing pending and threatened litigation, personnel, and land acquisition. So we could get a motion to enter.
So I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition.
Yeah.
Is that in the motion?
Yes.
Oh, it's in the motion, it's in the record.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you to all who came today. This meeting is now adjourned.